Because of the charter, pardon me, the code says that he can make, may remove any member for misconduct and a bunch of other things, and then it finishes up, or for any other sufficient cause. Now, in his letter, Mr. Culver, this is the letter of April 27th of this year, he just says to Mr. Lanning pursuant to section 138-5, that's what I was just reading from, "This letter is notification that you are removed as a member of the Board of Electrical Examiners effective immediately." It doesn't give any...
Mr. Taylor, if you could speak into the microphone for us.
Yeah, break the focus.
Yeah, I just repeat that. The letter that the county executive wrote on April 27th to Mr. Lanning says to him pursuant to section 138-5, and that's the section that allows him to remove members of the board...
Is that the same one that...
For misconduct, but it doesn't specify any particular reason. It just says, "This letter is notification that you are removed as a member of the Board of Electrical Examiners effective immediately." Now, you know, you would think that if you were doing that to someone, you would at least tell them why you were doing it.
Right, but as far as the code, you state the code says that he can make terminations.
Yes.
The code says that he also makes appointments, but they're not being done.
Well, I mean, that's another matter, but in terms of terminating Mr. Lanning, that comes under 138-5.
Is his termination valid due to the fact that he didn't offer a reason?
I think you'd probably have to go to the people across the street that wear the black robes and get an answer on that. My guess would be probably it doesn't make any difference, but I don't know. I just think that as a matter of current common decency, you would tell someone why you were removing him.
Yes.
We've got other members of the board here.
Hold on, Mr. Holloway.
Was there any reason for Mr. Lanning to be removed?
At the time, as Vice President, I didn't see anything wrong.
Can you get in front of the mic? Sorry about that. It's hard to understand when you're muffled, too.
Yeah, okay.
You bring it down just a little bit.
All right, thank you. I did not see anything that the man was doing wrong. Every single thing that he was trying to do was for the good of Waukesha County Electrical Board. I feel the same way on all the matters that he's been trying to get done as far as like finding his legal representation that's got an electrical background. I think that's very important for what we try to do for the Waukesha County.
And so he was a holdover, waiting for an appointment to be reappointed, wasn't he? How long was this going on?
During all this COVID-19 going on, I was starting to get emails from Paul Wilber stating that we had to have an election. We knew this before the shutdown, but we, but some of the members weren't able to make it due to personal reasons, so we weren't able to have the election.
So what was the election for?
New members.
So you would make the election for the new members?
All of us, we had to vote on it.
And he would have been elected?
Well, George, all of us, you know, like I was Vice President, George was President, and then Mr. Carter, he's the Treasurer, and then we got Rob and Brett here.
Yeah.
And we were just going to say who wanted to take over, because I'll play for him two years, and George is for a couple of years, too, so we're just going, you know, switch positions to stay within the, what they say. But we didn't have the opportunity to do it because the government building was shut, and all of us feel that, well, for us to have an adjusted meeting, that we need to be like we are now, together.
Then all of a sudden, April, you get that letter.
Yeah, and the next thing I know, I was told that Mr. Lanning was removed with no reason at all other than the 138-5.
Was there a replacement offered?
No, I was automatically put into the position of being President.
I think... Ms. Ackley, did you have a question first?
Yeah, I was looking for...
If you can use your microphone.
Their bylaws.
Use your mic, please.
I can't find your bylaws now, but as I recall, your bylaws did not have planning and zoning as your administrative support, correct?
Now, what was that again, about planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning was not your administrative support.
No.
Okay, and so with the Electrical Board, in accordance with the state law, you have to have a President, and aren't there, are there state standards for Electrical Boards? Because we don't have an inspector in the county. We don't have a county inspector, so it just, it seems like the bylaws are not aligned with what's happening with the removal of Mr. Lanning, with...
Well, as soon as Mr. Lanning was removed, I stepped into that position, mainly because we could not have the election yet.
Yeah.
We really, in a sense, really still can't, because it takes forehead to vote, and I don't feel that you can vote for yourself. And we want to got forehead on the board.
Did you set your names and positions?
My name is Rick Wheeler.
Robert Simmons.
And who do we have in the back?
First town member at large. Sure.
I know.
Subject of conversation.
And I also, during all this time, I was getting letters from, or not so much letters, but emails from Keith Hall telling me what the Board needs to be doing. I don't feel that's his place.
You don't feel, or is it his place?
I've been on board for over four years. George taught me very well about how the Board should be run, and I've helped him as Vice President for the past couple of years.
And I know Ms. Ackley has been trying to find that information, too, with the bylaws.
Well, I think it would help if, I think the reason for the meeting is to sort of get an idea of specifically what the Board's concerns are at this stage, what their shortfalls are right now, how they've been compromised, and what probably most likely what legal alternatives there are to address this, or I say legal, or any measures through government action legislative. Mr. Taylor, I think most of this would rest with you, to try to give them some closure as to where we are going from here, because right now, everything appears to be in complete limbo with as far as an attorney is concerned and as far as their members are concerned.
Well, I mean, I can just give you some thoughts of my own. I mean, you'll have to make the decisions, but to just address the attorney situation, that is provided in the code that the county attorney shall act as a legal advisor. So if that's to be changed, there has to be a code change. And I think that at least a part of the problem is the fact that the Board, some members, maybe all of them, feel that perhaps the Planning and Zoning Department is kind of usurping or interfering with what their job is under the code. Now, there are a couple of provisions in the code that do refer to the Department of Planning and Zoning. They issue the permits. It's a permit issuing agency for electrical work, but the standards for the electrical work are within the purview of the Board, not the people in the Planning and Zoning Department. The other, the other reference to the Planning and Zoning Department, and I may be using, I think it's now the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. Back when I started, it was the Planning and Zoning Department, and I, you know, kind of hard to change. But anyway, that department is also referenced as being the body that issues citations for civil infractions. Again, issues the citations. The inspectors are a matter within the Board's purview, the inspection of the work. So I think, I think there's perhaps some, maybe tension is understating it, but some concern that the Planning and Zoning Department is to some extent acting as the Electrical Board. I mean, maybe I'm overstating that, or maybe I'm understating it, I don't know which, but there seems to be that tension. And what you do about it, I mean, that's, that's an open question. There's different ways to do it, I guess, and I haven't looked to see how other counties handle their Electrical Boards. Every county, as I understand it, has one. There's a state Electrical Board as well, but that is different from the county boards. And I don't know why it's that way, but, you know, it's been that way for a long time, as far as I can tell. But it would be possible, I suppose, to set the Board up as essentially what I would call an independent Board. Now, that would mean then obviously that, well, who's going to do the filing work and the secretar, you know, in other words, the administrative work that I guess the Department of Planning and Zoning is doing now. So that would be kind of a sea change, but that would be a possibility. I guess another possibility would be to go in and amend some of these sections that refer to the Planning and Zoning, to make it absolutely crystal clear that they're just acting as a ministerial body. In other words, somebody comes in to get their permit. They have to make sure they're paying the money, they filled out the application, but they don't have anything to do with whether it's proper work or not. And that's another, in other words, that's another way to look at it, because as I read the general code on the Board, that's the Board's job. I mean, they appoint inspectors, they set the standards. So I think that's, that's an overview, and maybe I don't have it right, but based on the hearing a couple of months ago here, and some things I've read, that's kind of, that's sort of the sense I get of the problem.
Well, our responsibility is legislative, Mr. Taylor, so I guess the, my question would be, you know, or my charge would be for us to establish the guidelines that might be necessary to help fine tune this, this whole process legislatively, and you're suggesting there are some legislative measures we can take to do that.
I think that the code can be changed to make it very clear. Now, I think that we need to talk to these gentlemen and find out more specifically about what the situation is now and what they're concerned about.
Okay.
I'm just kind of giving an overview based on the last hearing we had here, what, a couple of months ago, and some things I've seen since then, and just reading through the code.
It was a work session, not a hearing?
Yeah, well, whatever. I mean, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ackley, I think you were grabbing the mic a couple of times. You have a question?
Yeah, I don't see any mention of the executive in here as far as appointing Board members. I just see the county.
Okay, we'll look at section 133-5, that's removal, and appointment would be 138-4.
She's looking for bylaws.
I'm looking for bylaws.
Well, I mean, the bylaws, the code controls that.
That's true.
The code, I mean, I don't know why it would be in the bylaws other than to just reiterate, Paul Parrott, what's in the code. No need to do that, it's in the code. So gentlemen, I guess...
I was under the impression that the state Electrical Board set the bylaws.
Not that I'm aware of. These gentlemen probably know more about that than I do, but I did look after that meeting a couple of months ago, just to see if there was any state overview of the county boards, and I didn't see any. I don't think there is, but I, you know, I looked kind of quickly, and I did find the references and all to the state Board, the state Electrical Board, but that's a different, they have somewhat different function than the county boards.
Mr. Cannon?
I was just going to ask if you, gentlemen, could just maybe give us an, you know, an idea of exactly where you think clarity needs to exist. That would be helpful. It may be an extension to the work session we had before.
I feel that Planning and Zoning shouldn't be interfering with the Electrical Board at all periods. They didn't start even coming to the meetings until the issue with an inspector license at that time. After that, it's been ongoing.
Your committee should be independent, nonpartisan.
And Mr. Taylor, is there anything in the legis, the code that says anything about Planning and zoning and their position with the Electrical Board?
Well, yeah, I've mentioned a couple of sections, but I mean, to me, it's, those are ministerial functions. I mean, they don't, as far as I know, there's nobody down there that has any particular training...
Which is typical of most organizations.
...in electrical matters or any authority under the code. They are to issue permits and to issue citations, but it would seem to me that the basis for the citation would be generated by the Board or the inspectors, not by somebody in the Planning and Zoning Department.
So Mr. Taylor, you're suggesting that the council could pass legislation that would create that separation?
I think it ought to be clarified, yeah, from what I'm hearing.
Okay, all right, so that's, that could be one step. What else would you like to address?
Mr. Taylor, can you work on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think having you, having the Electrical Board as an independent body...
We think we can create that independence for you. What else, what other measures would you like to see us address?
I'd like to see if there's any way that we can get George reinstated to the Board. I think him being dismissed like he was is a huge loss, mainly because of his qualifications.
Mr. Taylor, what are your thoughts?
Well, at least from a standpoint of just general legislation, it would be possible to change, I suppose, how people are appointed. Now, there is a provision in the Charter, and maybe Ms. Hurley could, but I mean, I want to look at that. I'm not sure that that provision in the Charter is insurmountable, but it does reference appointments by the county executive to certain bodies, and I don't know whether it would apply to the Electrical Board or not.
Would it be similar to the, to the Charter Review Committee?
Well, I mean, it, yes and no. I mean, it's a different committee, it does a different thing, I mean...
Would it require a charter amendment?
I don't know. I have to look at that section.
I was under the impression, Mr. Taylor, that that appointment was no different than the Airport Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission. I felt that the Electrical Board might fall under that exact same section, but maybe not.
No, no.
138-4.
Mr. Taylor.
Well, you're talking about the Charter now.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I'd have to look at that, I just don't know.
But they issue citations, they do more than, it's more than just like the Airport Commission.
Right, but I'm just trying, I'm just trying to see by Charter if they fall within that same realm, and if they don't, and if they don't, that may give us more leeway to allow them more autonomy.
Are you making reference to like how we changed the department head at the airport?
No, I'm just saying, as you know, I have to be appointed, recommended by the executive, approved by the council, to be appointed to the Airport Commission. Joe has to have the same to be on Planning and Zoning. Are there the same restrictions and guidelines for the Electrical Board, or is it completely separate entity?
Well, there's certainly a distinction between the Electrical Board and the Airport Commission and the nominee, and the Salary Commission that we have. I mean, those are basically advisory boards. The Charter and Code provide that the Airport Commission is purely advisory. They have no administrative power at all.
Josh, do you have that section up right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to be clear, are there, how many members are there currently?
On the Board?
Yeah.
Four.
There's supposed to be six, right?
That's correct.
So we've lost two. So maybe if there was a section of it, you know, if, if we could add into code if the county executive's office fails to produce the name within 30 days, you know, the county council can then have the authority to do so, or something like that. I don't know if that would need to be amended, but currently, it has to be the county executive confirmed by council, just like anything else.
But that's, that's a charter amendment.
Right.
I was forgetting that, is, are we talking Charter or are we talking code here? To make this...
That's a two-year, that's a two-year process.
Mr. Hastings, you said four members. Is there an additional member that we're not seeing?
That's correct.
There's one, there's one absent, yes.
Somebody is not here?
Yes, Mr. Ann Carter.
Okay, so you weren't including George in the four?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, George been removed, we're kind of limited what we can do. Any member can't come, we can't vote on anything, period. We got table everything.
So you're at a standstill, basically?
Yeah, pretty much.
Josh?
Yeah, so just for clarity there, you had four members, you, Mr. Lanning's supposed to be gone, and then how did you acquire another one?
The other one that...
Or was there already five?
There was five with George.
Gotcha.
And that gave us a little bit of a margin to still be able to do something if a member couldn't make it because of a personal reason.
So you were already down one, right? Now you're down two with, with George, so it's, it's hard to get a quorum, isn't it?
Right, yes, sir.
And so then how do you, how are you issuing, how are you issuing license? Because you, you have to get, the elections have to come with the Electrical Board.
We're not going to have a first meeting till next week, since the shutdown, and...
But Planning and zoning can't do it, it has to be the Electrical Board.
So appointment of the Electrical Board, is that done through Charter or through code? I don't understand.
Well, it's, it's essentially nominated by the exec, confirmed by the council.
Through, through what basis? Through code or through Charter?
Code, that's code.
And, and we have much more flexibility in changing code, as Councilman Kane says. We don't have to go through a two-year Charter process, we can do it much quicker through code.
Well, but the only problem would be if that would violate that Charter provision, and I just don't have that, can you recall what section that is, Laura?
I mean, I can read it if you want, I have it right here.
Well, just tell me what section it is.
Ms. Hurley?
So, so it's 315B, it's titled Boards and Commissions, and it says, "Appointment by the county executive to membership on a board or commission shall be subject to confirmation by the county council. If the council fails to act to confirm or reject any appointment within 45 days of its submission to the county council at its legislative session by the county executive, the appointment shall stand approved."
So their appointments are by the county executive?
Well, I actually thought there might be another section. I mean, it's kind of catching me cold here. I mean, this doesn't specifically say that the appointment has to be made by the county executive. It says, "Appointment by the county executive," if that's the way it happens, then that has to be confirmed. I mean, it's a little, it's a, it's a little ambiguous. It could be read, I guess, that that means he's, has to make the appointment. It could also be read that unless somewhere else it says he has to make the appointment, it can be made some other way. As I say, that's the ambiguity, and unfortunately, there's a lot of ambiguity in laws and statutes and charters. So I'm not totally certain, sitting here tonight, that just changing the code would be okay because of this Charter provision we've just been looking at.
So how long have you been down the sixth member?
Quite a while.
Give me a good idea. Three years? And how long are the appointments for?
Three years.
Three years. And Mr. Lanning, I was asking the question earlier, you were sort of a holdover, correct? Yours, that term had expired, so how long were you a holdover before you got that fancy letter?
Probably two years.
Really? So you weren't appointed for two years without acting? Okay.
My time was up last September also, and I stayed on to help George out.
So you haven't been reappointed yet?
I haven't been reappointed since last September.
We've got a big mess going on.
And I always thought that a Board member could not be removed until he was replaced, he or she was replaced.
And they issued licenses?
I can't hear you, can you speak up?
It's just, it's very upsetting to me because of what you, what your responsibilities are. If there's a code violation, if you're issuing permits, I mean, there's a lot that you're doing, and that you're not really a functioning Board, you don't have enough members.
There is a provision in the actual county code as well, and I think Josh touched on it, but if I can read that, it says, "The Board shall consist of six members, all of whom, except for the Electrical Inspector, must be residents of this county and citizens of the United States, appointed by the county executive and confirmed by the county council. One shall represent the general public of Waukesha County, one shall represent a local electrical utility company, and one shall be Electrical Inspector. Two shall be engaged in the electrical contracting business for a period in excess of five years, and one may represent a local electric utility company, or be an Electric Inspector, or be engaged in the electrical contracting business."
Yeah, but for all of them, they have to be nominated by the exec and confirmed by the council.
Appointed by, yes.
According to this language, as I mentioned earlier.
So how accurate are those backgrounds? Hard to say.
Just, just...
What's your question? When you say how accurate are...
Yeah, the provisions that she just read off, like, is there somebody from a utilities company?
No, we do not have one of those. After this year, COVID-19 gets more released, I was, there's a lady on the, in Delmar Repair that I know, and Mr. Lanning knows her also, and I was going to see if she was on.
Okay, and then...
But we'll wait, we'll wait.
Technically, you have to go through the county executive with that nomination.
True, yes.
Just, just a...
But I was going to ask, would she be interested? I've also been talking to other numerous contractors out in the field, come said, and they don't want to take the time.
And is there a problem with adopting the Electrical Code?
Not yet, we just haven't had a chance to go completely all through it yet.
Okay, so, and you guys do electrical work, and in my experience in the fire department, I've been on a lot of electrical fires, I've seen lives lost, and if it's not done appropriately, you guys have a dangerous job there, and it's important that it's done right.
That's why we take this serious. When we're taking, when we review our licenses that come before us and applications, especially for inspectors, we look them over as they should be looked over, because we feel that it is, is our responsibility, or I feel is our responsibility, to make sure that these people are properly vetted for the citizens of Waukesha County. So when I look at their, if they don't have something adding up, whether they don't have the continuing education that has met the requirements that we asked for, or they have not taken an examination that has not met our standards, then that's when we ask them to please either provide us with current continuing education, or take an examination, that would be our standard, or reciprocate from a county that we accept reciprocation from. So when, when we come back, come back into that, like you're saying with being in the fire department, take that seriously, that we want to make sure that the people that we are issuing licenses to deserve them.
I get that, I understand that. Any more comments?
I just have a general question, but apparently, it sounds like for some time now, months, maybe over a year, there've been several positions that haven't been reappointed. Does anybody know why the county executive isn't making the appointments? Can he not get the people to...
The county executive has stated that he's not making those appointments because he feels it's not in order, and he's afraid it would compromise his position, his somewhat imaginary position of his responsibility to appoint and the council's responsibility to approve.
On the Charter?
That's why, that's why those appointments are not coming forward.
It goes back to that Charter amendment, doesn't it?
It goes back to the same, same argument we've been having now for a year and a half.
But now we're falling into Boards are missing members, Boards are missing members, and, I mean, there's other Boards that get grants that have to have certain members, and they're not being, there's...
And there's other Boards that you know of, is what you're saying?
Joe volunteered, you volunteered for Planning and Zoning a year ago.
That's correct, I did.
Planning and zoning does not have a council representative on Planning and Zoning.
How long has that been, Joe?
A year or so. You know, it's just, it's, hey, it's just, you know, it's just his mode of operation, you know?
Something's got to work, something's got to change.
Mr. Taylor, I'll leave out the reference to Denmark, but something's rotten.
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor, I guess the only thing we could do is to really try to find out whether or not, hopefully, maybe the Electrical Board could be a separate entity from Planning and Zoning Commissions, Airport Commissions, and all the other appointments, and if that could be the case, then we could change the code without violating any Charter, but we have to know, right?
Yeah, the, the only thing that I'm really concerned about changing and conflicting with the Charter is the appointment. I mean, the rest of it, if the, if the council wants to set it up as, quote, "an independent Board," independent of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, I think we've resolved that, yeah. That's one, I think that's one thing we can accomplish. I don't know if we're going to get as far on the appointment process for the individual members, and we'll have to give Mr. Taylor some time on that. Are there any other issues that you'd like to try to have us resolve for you?
Well, I'd like to know if George can still help the Board out until we, can George, Mr. Lanning, help the Board out until, if he can't be reinstated, till a replacement is found?
I don't have an answer to that, and I know where you're going with that, Mr. Taylor.
And I really can't answer it because of what the code says, that the county attorney shall act as a legal advisor. So, I mean, I...
Well, when I was appointed to the Board four and a half, so years ago, I received a letter, and that letter also stated that when my time was up, I could not leave the Board until a replacement was found.
You were drafted.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, and that's, and that's true, they give, they give a substitute, I don't remember the number.
George, do you have that letter?
So how can George be taken, removed from the Board completely until he is replaced?
Mr. Holloway?
George, do you have that same letter?
No.
That you still have it?
So you can't leave.
I think that you could have, my, my personal opinion is that George can sit in on all of your meetings, he just doesn't have any authority to vote.
He could help in any way, but yeah.
Yes, I was ready to have a seat. I was violent by Mr. Hall not to listen to anything George told me.
The second, the second part of that is that you may face retribution, whereas you may be dismissed from the, from the Board yourselves. I don't know how they could do that.
I've not been reinstated to start with.
Yeah.
I'm staying on as, to help Mr. Lanning out.
I think they need to be very careful.
And I wouldn't use his name on any documents.
They need to be very careful, because you're very...
What do you mean?
I wouldn't use his name, making it sound like you're using him as a member. You can use his advice, but I wouldn't sign his name.
I wouldn't use him as a member to start with. I've always looked for George for advice.
I know he's around, and you guys talk to each other, and I would suggest you continue that.
I would suggest that this county needs to pay very close attention to the electrical board. If you gentlemen decided to resign tomorrow morning, the county would be in one heck of a bind. And I think it's important that the administration recognizes that.
That's what Rob and I were just talking about. That was our point. Mr. Taylor, go ahead and look at the code information that you're gonna look at and get back with us. And if you guys have any suggestions, let Ms. Hurley know, and we can give it to Mr. Taylor.
While we're, while we're kicking the gong around on this, I think they could also provide, by code change, that they can have their own attorney. Now, that'd have to, that'd have to pay, you know, there'd have to be funds generated to pay the attorney.
Yeah. Do you have a comment?
Exactly. Is the?
You gotta speak through the mic. Go ahead to the podium up there. You'll be six foot away.
Is the county attorney, the council-approved county attorney?
Yeah, that's a good question. We don't have a county attorney, per se.
So therefore, when the board gets advice from the, is it valid?
We have a, we have a, as I said.
We deal with that every day.
I said, I deleted the reference to Denmark, but you know my view.
Okay. Any more comments?
I do have a question. On the, in the verbiage where it talks about the members of the electrical board, it says that every member in there would have it, actually has a vested interest in Wacomiko County, except for the electrical inspector. He doesn't have to be a resident of the county.
I think he should be.
I think, as well as I do, I mean, all of us, the contractors and the, for as far as the public utility goes, of course, they're serving, serving the county anyways. However, for the electrical inspector, that's not in there, and I don't know if that's because, I don't know how many inspectors live in the county. I mean, I know of one who happens to be sitting behind me, but I think that, I don't know what it would take to amend that.
Is that in the code, you say?
I'm not sure, sir.
Was that the provisions that?
It is, it is in the code, yeah. Yeah, the code was last amended in 2006.
It doesn't say that it has to be a resident.
What'd you say, Mr. Hastings?
You're asking that it should be?
In my opinion, I think that should be a resident, they should be a resident of this county.
That's an issue, that's an issue they want us to address to, to.
I think that's a good point.
To the code.
All right. Anything further? All right, thank you, guys. Sorry you had to wait so late. We're still here.
They've been here forever. Is there anything else you guys, I mean, seriously, anything else that's come up that you need to address?
I can't think of anything right yet. Like I said, your building just starting to open up, and we have our first meeting, get back, and start getting things rolling again. So we won't know until we start having our meetings and start seeing what's presented to us.
Yeah.
And go from there.
Mr. Taylor will work on this, and then we'll be back in touch with you. I promise.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Lead a motion, go back in legislative session.
Some of, second.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, guys. See you, guys. Ms. Harley?
We will continue with public comments. This one is from David in Deborah Stabe. I'd like to ask the county council to vote yes on the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution. I live in Wacomiko County and have for many years.
All right, next is Jay Martin of Byvale. And he says, "It has come to my attention that the council will consider Sheriff Lewis's request that Wacomiko County become a Second Amendment sanctuary county. While I have respect for Sheriff Lewis, his request should be denied. Survey after survey demonstrate that the will of the American people is in favor of common sense gun laws, including universal background checks and red flag laws. The logic of easing restrictions on gun purchases, which could put more guns on the streets to combat a serious gun control problem, escapes me, similar to throwing gasoline on a fire if you are trying to extinguish it. The unwillingness of politicians to enact sensible gun legislation is the best or worst example of their deafness to the will of the people. As a concerned citizen of Wacomiko County, I am adamantly opposed to such a foolish and possibly illegal action by the council. I suggest that in this period of upheaval due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the council has more important issues to consider than this legislation that, in addition to being in direct opposition to the will of the people, could also invite an unwelcome state of lawsuits."
Okay, next is from Barry M. King. I am writing out a deep concern over the proposed resolution you are considering declaring Wacomiko County a Second Amendment sanctuary. Before addressing the language of the proposed resolution, let me ask you how such action helps the brand of our county in competing for new business development and talent recruitment, core interests that affect the quality of life of all citizens of the county. If Wacomiko County is to thrive in the future, we must make ourselves attractive to businesses and prospective employees and their families. The proposed resolution, which positions us as a jurisdiction, a community that elects not to enforce state laws regarding guns, runs counter to this. Does branding ourselves as a community that lives outside the rule of law serve this interest or any other public interest for that matter? For any who see such a measure as purely symbolic, I would ask if this kind of symbolism is really helpful to the economic development of Wacomiko County and the well-being of our citizens. As for the resolution itself, its intent seems clear to prevent local government from enforcing and using local taxes to implement gun laws enacted by state government. In other words, if Wacomiko County Council adopts this resolution, it will allow the sheriff's office, for example, to refuse to arrest individuals that violate Maryland's Firearms Safety Act of 2013, which banned the sale of certain assault-style weapons and magazines holding greater than 10 rounds of ammunition. For the same reason, it would not legally, but in effect, through non-enforcement, make this a, quote, "open carry," end quote, jurisdiction. Finally, as public officials, I presume the oath of office you took included a commitment to uphold and enforce the law. It's impossible to fulfill such an oath to meet your duty by voting for this resolution. For any who disagree with current law, I encourage them to engage in getting the law changed. That's how democracy is supposed to work."
All right, next is from KDB Eversen. A sanctuary is defined as being a place of refuge or safety. So I'm curious how the Wacomiko County Council thinks allowing criminals, those with serious mental health issues, domestic abusers, and other prohibited people easy access to guns will help make Wacomiko County safer. The latest available data from the Maryland State Police Uniform Crime Reports shows Wacomiko County ranks fourth out of 24 counties in the state for crime. Perhaps the council should focus its efforts on combating gun violence and violent crime within its borders rather than undermining state and national efforts to curb this horrific epidemic. We know from exhaustive data that states with comprehensive gun laws experience lower rates of gun homicide, gun suicide, and gun trafficking. We also know that firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens in the state of Maryland and across the nation. Just this year, researchers from Johns Hopkins University released a study that found gun suicides in rural areas of Maryland are double that of its suburban areas. Given this information, I cannot imagine a more tone-deaf response from the council than declaring Wacomiko County a, quote, "two-way sanctuary," end quote. Over 90% of Americans and the majority of Marylanders support gun safety laws because they are interested in keeping guns out of the hands of those who would pose a threat to our children, our families, and our communities. Responsible gun ownership, including the one I'm married to, excuse me, responsible gun owners, including the one I'm married to, aren't intimidated by background checks and red flag laws, and certainly don't buy into toxic and misinformed rhetoric of extremists who are scared of losing their guns. We shouldn't have to ask our children to endure traumatic active shooter drills or wear bulletproof backpack inserts because of, because our representatives are too afraid to ask grown adults to pass a background check and to store their weapons responsibly. A growing number of Eastern Shore parents and concerned citizens expect our representatives to prioritize the safety of our children and communities by embracing, not denying, lifesaving gun safety laws."
Okay, the next public comment is from Maurice in Jaclyn Cox. Please, 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 do not vote to make our lovely Wacomiko County a sanctuary county for gun law avoiders. The thought of Wacomiko County being used as a place where skullfloss congregants sends chills down my spine. Wacomiko County is a place for education. Can you imagine a rogue gun manic firing on the students at Warwick Tech or Salisbury University? Can you imagine how you would feel if that were to happen after you had voted to allow unrestricted gun owners protection from the laws that help keep us safe? Wacomiko County is a place where people congregate to listen to wonderful band concerts in the summer, where people relax and greet their neighbors, where children march to the strands of a patriotic march while waving flags. Can you imagine a gunman showering the crowd with bullets? Can you imagine how you would feel? Wacomiko County is where people from all over our nation gather for folk festivals to watch entertainers from around the world. What a disaster for our county and our state were that festival to be stained blood of participants attacked by a gun that was used in Las Vegas. How would you feel? Over 40 years ago, my husband and I left California with our son and my mother. California is a beautiful state, but we wanted to live in an area that was not only beautiful, but also felt safe. We decided Wacomiko County was that area. We opened up a business, and we operated for 20, 20 years, joined the exchange club and a church, helped start a bicycle club, volunteered at several venues, and thoroughly enjoy, quote, "the land of gentle living," end quote. We love our Wacomiko County, and we would do anything we can to keep it safe for families, for students, and for visitors who want to enjoy for decades to come.
All right, next is from Virginia Mayer. She's a member of the Peace Alliance of the Lower Shore. I am writing to oppose the enactment of legislation establishing Wacomiko County as a Second Amendment sanctuary. I have lived in Wacomiko County now for 20 years, and during this time, I have come to love the area. This is largely because I feel it is to be, I feel it to be a peaceful place, caring for all its citizens. But I am concerned that the possession of guns by those who are mentally unstable is a threat. I am concerned that the possession of weapons of mass destruction could lead to events similar to the tragedies we have seen in other parts of the country. Therefore, I support the requirement of background checks in order to buy guns as well as a ban on the sale of select ones. I also realize that Wacomiko County is largely rural and that there are many who enjoy hunting. I cannot see that any of the proposed gun regulations would take away this right. In fact, they should make it safer for those who hunt. They would know that others who were hunting were safe to be with, and they would be assured that hunting remained an honorable sport. Certainly, no hunter would consider it sporting to mow down animals with an assault weapon. I am hoping that the county, which I love, will be one where all can enjoy the beauties of nature within, without fear of being shot by someone who should not have a gun. I am hoping our schools never have to experience the trauma of a mass shooter. I am hoping that cultural events such as Third Friday and the Folk Festival will remain free of violence. Because of this, I urge you to vote against the Second Amendment sanctuary, which would allow our county to bypass regulations intended to make us all safer.
Okay, next is from Philip LaBelle. It has come to my attention that the aforementioned draft resolution has been presented from work session number one to the county council for resolution. I ordinarily do not write letters to elected officials on matters of public policy, but find myself compelled to do so in this case. I am astonished that the council would consider the Second Amendment at risk by the Maryland General Assembly or any other body of public law. The Second Amendment has been upheld in a number, any number of cases, which, in my view, makes this resolution both unnecessary and potentially harmful. Where such a resolution passed, we would no longer rely on our duly constituted state, county, and local authorities to administer justice. Without any means identifying who is armed and who is not, how would we be able to constitute a, quote, "well-armed militia," end quote? Under such an arrangement, who would be responsible for his actions, and under what law would it proclaim his actions as justified? With everyone armed, we would no longer need our duly constituted law enforcement services for which we now pay our taxes. Should we disband these law enforcement institutions on the basis of the Second Amendment? I am satisfied in paying my taxes to support these institutions at that they obviate the need for me to carry a weapon to engage in commercial transactions, attend a social gathering, or a religious one. I would not be in the absence of some oversight now provided through our justice system. The language of a, quote, "gun sanctuary," end quote, is peculiar at best. I note that Wacomiko County and the Delmarva region are not only home to successful businesses ranging from poultry to tourism. Our county has put out a welcome mat to work with Governor Hogan to attract new business to the region. What I find puzzling is how many businesses would choose deliberately to come to Wacomiko County when it's been designated as a, quote, "gun sanctuary," end quote. I do not think it would represent a successful marketing strategy for the economic future on which we all depend. Whatever the concerns of those advocating a, quote, "gun sanctuary," end quote, they can be better met through a transparent and accountable system of law enforcement. I trust that you share this priority and that you will devote your efforts to making the county a welcome home for the business and professional opportunities that it offers both to residents and to prospective newcomers to the region.
Lynn?
And next is from Phil and Carol Toman. They say they agree that sanctuary designation allows our sheriff to enforce only those state laws that he agrees with. Not a good situation regardless of who is the sheriff.
Okay, next is from Michelle Cooper. I'm writing to submit a comment regarding the proposed resolution to make Wacomiko County a two-way sanctuary county. I am a county resident. I reside in District Four. Josh Hastings is my.
She spoke already.
She did, okay.
You want me to do the next one more?
It's a real short one, I.
From Bellin Visson, Visons. Hello, I am writing to express my opposition to the declaration of Wacomiko County as a two-way sanctuary county. I am in favor of tougher gun controls.
Okay, so the next one is. The next one is from Dr. Nicole Hollywood. My name is Nicole Hollywood, and I'm a Wacomiko County resident living in District Two. I'm a local educator, a gun owner, and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action, and I would like to submit my testimony to be read at the next county council meeting in response to the proposed two-way sanctuary resolution. 100 people die from gun violence every day in this country, and hundreds more are wounded. Additionally, firearms, not cancer or car accidents, are the leading, leading cause of death of children and teens in Maryland. Many gun-owning families, like my own, are concerned about responsible gun ownership and keeping their families safe and recognizing that gun violence is every bit an issue in rural areas on the Lower Shore as it is in other parts of the state. Our elected and appointed leaders in Wacomiko County have an obligation to enforce the law, particularly those that have helped protect us from senseless gun violence. Second Amendment sanctuary resolutions, like the one currently under consideration by the Wacomiko County Council, are legally meaningless, but they undermine the rule of the law, foster distrust between law enforcement and communities, confuse people into thinking that they do not have to follow gun laws, and may deter others from reporting individuals who may hurt themselves or others. The sheriffs and county officials in Wacomiko County considered two-way sanctuary status are representing a vocal minority, but not the will of the people. This action is quite simply a jester, but it's a gesture that is insensitive to individuals on the Eastern Shore who have been impacted by gun violence and comes during a time when the COVID-19 pandemic is impacting so many families. Instead of passing dangerous resolutions with no impact on state or local laws, our leadership focuses on solutions to help keep families safe in Maryland and assist those who have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Leaders who are trying to violate oaths and shirk duties are on the wrong side of this issue. They are protecting us. They aren't doing their jobs, and they aren't in line with the majority of voters who support common sense gun laws, like background checks on all gun sales. The facts and overwhelming data prove that background checks, red flag laws, and responsible gun ownership that keep unsecured guns out of the hands of children save lives and are supported by the procondurance of Americans. Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Barnes of Salisbury. I am a concerned citizen in Wacomiko County, Maryland, and I would like to voice my opposition to the proposed two-way sanctuary resolution. 100 people die from gun violence every day in this country, and hundreds more are wounded. Additionally, firearms, not cancer or car accidents, are the leading cause of death of children and teens in Maryland. of children and teens in Maryland. Gun violence is every bit an issue in rural areas like Wacomiko County as it is in any other part of this great state. Also, when a person is in crisis and considering harming themselves or others, family members and law enforcement are often the first people to see the warning signs. As a former police officer of twenty years, I know this to be true. Extreme risk laws, sometimes referred to as red flag laws, empower loved ones or law enforcement to intervene in order to temporarily prevent someone in crisis from accessing firearms. These laws can help deescalate emergency situations and are a proven way to intervene before gun violence such as firearm suicide or mass shooting takes more American lives. States around the country are increasingly turning to extreme risk laws as a common sense way to help reduce gun violence. Undermining life-saving laws is harmful to this community and puts Wacomiko County families in danger. I ask you to vote against the proposed two-way sanctuary resolution and instead focus on the health and well-being of Wacomiko County. Thanks so much for your time and for your service to our county.
Next, we have one from Jennifer M. Schultz. Hello, as a citizen, a citizen of Wacomiko County, I am disturbed to hear that Sheriff Lewis would like Wacomiko County declared a, quote, "two-second amendment sanctuary county," end quote. This is unacceptable. Sheriff Lewis should be committed to enforcing all of the laws on the books, not declaring that the city of Salisbury will not enforce them. Please vote no and do not allow Wacomiko to be declared as such. Thank you.
All right, next is Rabbi Bailey. I know that you must be busy, so I'll be brief. It is the year 2020, and there are less Jewish people than in the year 1935. Working on a century later, and we have not recognized from the Holocaust in numbers alone, this event is traced by scholars to one main decision by the Nazi regime, the registration and subsequent removal of arms possessed by the civilian population. And to basically think this is a high rank L is near insanity, but government officials kill civilians frequently with near impunity, and the current rise of ethno-nationalism is disturbing to say the very least. We coined the phrase "never again" to remind our descendants not to repeat the mistakes of the past. Please help us in doing that. You will have the eternal gratitude of all of us locally and so far as I may speak for the Jewish people as a whole as well. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next is from Vicki DeMois.
We already got that one.
Thank you. Next is from Sandra K. Martin. First, please note that I am not against the Second Amendment at all. However, I am opposed to Wacomiko County being declared a Second Amendment sanctuary. After seeing the three of three council meeting work sessions, I was somewhat confused. One, I did not know if the problem was that the senior citizen could not fill out the application. Two, or that she could not sell the gun she inherited from the death of her husband. Three, why do we need to do this if it's only ceremonial and symbolic? My question is, who is, who is it ceremonial and symbolic for? What is the symbolism? And does it reflect the whole of Wacomiko County or of you? The symbol for me is to stand your ground law, where you shoot someone and say, "I was standing my ground," whether they are on your property or someone else's, and someone is riding in the back of a truck with a gun and thinks someone has done something wrong and feels that they have the right to shoot them. My question is, will all people be given the same opportunity and the same rights as they stand their ground? If there are seniors who need help getting things done online, there is family, friends, nonprofits, and other organizations willing to help if asked. If the Sheriff's Department needs additional persons to protect the citizens of Wacomiko County, then I say bring that before the county council as you did earlier this year, and the department received three additional officers. Do not deputize all of the Wacomiko County and end up in the Wild, Wild West. No one wants to live in that environment. We have a county attorney on staff. Why are we not listening to him? We are paying him for his expertise and legal opinion. It was written in the draft resolution, the third whereas, that the founding father, George Mason, commented at the Virginia Ratifying Convention, quote, "I ask who are the militia? They consist of the whole people," end quote. I found information on George Mason, but I could not find the quote that is written in the draft resolution. I did find the following quote in the George Mason, Mason speech, Virginia Ratifying Convention on June the fourth, seventeen eighty-eight, quote, "There is one thing in which I conceive to be extremely dangerous. Gentlemen may talk of public virtue and confidence. We shall be told that the House of Representatives will consist of the most virtuous men on the continent, and that in their hands we may trust their dearest rights. This, like all assemblies, will be composed of some bad and some good men, and considering the natural lust of power so inherent in man, I fear the thirst of power will prevail to oppress the people," end quote. I ask that you not make George Mason's fear come true and let political power oppress the people. I revisited the Constitution and took a more detailed look at the Second Amendment. It states in part, quote, "a well-regulated militia," end quote. To me, it's not inclusive of persons who have obtained a gun permit. It is a military force that is raised from the civil population to supplement a regular army in an emergency, as per the definition of militia and synonyms for military indicated below. So again, I do not understand why Wacomiko County needs to be a Second Amendment sanctuary. I would think the National Guard could serve as a militia in case of an emergency. It is possible that the right of the people to keep and bear arms is referring to the regulated militia, a military force that is raised from the civil population, and they might have the right to keep and bear arms. Amendment number two, a well-regulated militia being necessary, necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to bear, keep and bear arms shall not be infringed, end quote. Militia, a military force that is raised from the civil population to supplement a regular army in an emergency. Synonyms, armed forces, army, forces, services, soldiery, navy, air force, marine, special forces. The more I read the Second Amendment, I believe the City of Salisbury Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Maryland State Police are all the militia necessary for the security of Wacomiko County. If things get rough, they have the National Guard and others as backup, and they are well-regulated. We do not need ceremony and civilism unless it is a positive effect on all citizens of Wacomiko County. The resolution to declare Wacomiko County as a Second Amendment sanctuary does not describe exactly what that entails. It seems that one A, B, C, and two are not within the county council's review and approval authority according to what was said at the county council meeting. So I ask that you think about all the citizens of Wacomiko County and how it will affect all of us, and how we all feel about what is being considered. This is not a political issue, but a life-changing issue. If this must be, why can't it wait until we can come before the county council and speak? You are creating a welcoming environment or one that will make the citizens want to leave because they don't feel safe or deter others from moving to Wacomiko, deter others from moving to Wacomiko County. I am a daughter, sister, wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, aunt, niece, cousin, friend, organization member, volunteer, friend, church member, and all of these, I am connected to African-American males whom I love, and in no way do I feel this is beneficial to them or to the community, and it really hurts my heart because I know the heartache it can bring. Thank you for your time.
All right, next is Harry Basehart from Wacomiko County, District Four. This email concerns the proposed Second Amendment sanctuary resolution being considered by the Wacomiko County Council. As everyone knows, it's part of a statewide, even nationwide movement to pressure local governments to endorse the sanctuary tactic so recent gun safety measures will be worthless. It has been called largely, quote, "symbolic," end quote, but that's simply not true. In reality, the purpose of Second Amendment sanctuaries is to prevent local governments from enforcing gun safety laws enacted by state government. In other words, if the Wacomiko County Council adopts this resolution, it will allow the sheriff's office, for example, to refuse to-
This is frozen.
Next. I'll, I'll proceed with the next one. This is from Lawrence Kent. My name is Lawrence Kent. I'm sending this to you today as we are at a pivotal time in our history. Since the first settlers came over from Europe to what was then called the New World, firearms have been an integral part of our lives, both sport, providing for our families' self-defense, and for the protection of our way of life in our country. Our country was founded on a set of laws and rights provided to us by the founders of this great nation because they wanted and needed freedom from a tarnical, overreaching government from across the Atlantic Ocean. Now here we are in 2020, and we are finding ourselves in a similar situation just in a different time. We have a government that seems to think that they need to act as our parents as if they know what is best for us. The fact of the matter is the U.S. Constitution stated that our government was to be, quote, "for the people, by the people," end quote. Unfortunately, some elected officials will say what the masses want to hear in order to get elected, but never actually intend to follow through with what they say they stand for, rather base their choice, choices on what will advance their personal agendas and bank accounts. Now let's look at Maryland. A large bulk or all of the legislation in our state is based on what Annapolis feels is best for the largest population centers of our state, which is located around Baltimore County and Montgomery County. The violent crime rates in those areas is significantly higher than here on the shore. Not to say we don't have our problems, we do. Now let's look at the events that have occurred over the past two weeks. There has been widespread protests and violence in a number of major cities, including Baltimore, D.C., Philadelphia, and its closest Dover, all being fueled by mainstream media and social media. Police forces all over the country are being targeted and pushed to their limits with the social unrest. These most recent events are all the more reason why this council should uphold their constitutional duty and unanimously approve this resolution before you by Sheriff Mike Lewis.
All right, next is from Kelsey Maddox, a resident of Hebron, Maryland. I strongly urge the county council to vote against this resolution. It is unclear to me why this resolution is needed. As I understand it, the county is not responsible for developing gun regulatory regulations in the state of Maryland. It is a state function, and counties and municipalities are charged with following the laws. This resolution may be the beginning of a move in Maryland to move into a society that condones free use of weapons in almost any situation. I do not want to see Maryland slash Wacomiko County become a, quote, "stand your ground," end quote, area. As we have seen, it is almost impossible to refute a person's claim that he or she felt threatened in any situation. Opportunity for opposition to gun regulation restrictions proposed by the state is already in place. There is already available to residents the right to appeal to the Supreme Court to determine, quote, "unconstitutional," end quote, laws or regulations. The county's attorney or any citizen can use this established procedure without adopting this resolution. Again, I ask the council to vote this resolution down because it is unnecessary.
Okay, the next one is from Donnie Waters. Good evening, President Dodd, county council members, and members of the community. My name is Donnie Waters. I am a concerned citizen who resides in Wacomiko County. I am an avid sportsman who enjoys fishing, hunting, and many of the recreational activities in our county. I am an avid firearm owner who supports the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The ability to have conflicting ideas in one's head takes effort. We are all formed with frailty and error. Let us pardon reciprocally each other's follies, yet dangling in the balance is the ethnological question that with great trepidation haunts our community and the larger society. That is, what does it mean to be human? What do we treat the least? The lost, the vulnerable, the poor, the disenfranchised, the marginalized, in our neighbor in all its presentations? What safeguards do, quote, "we the people," end quote, have to ensure that each person's rights will be upheld? Our system of government aspires to high principles that suggest that the duty of elected officials is promulgate with the will of, quote, "we the people," muting the loud cries from partisans, um, venue, political parties, or well-meaning, meaning, or ill- advised groups. We are asked to recite as if it's a true and pledge of allegiance which in part says, quote, "one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for, justice for all," end quote. Invoking God suggests a higher level of aspiration. How does our conduct align to enforce that all receive liberty and justice, that all voices are heard and given proper consideration weighted by the law? It is, is it ego or is it delusion for the uninitiated, quote, "EGO," end quote, is the acronym for edging God out? So then it seems that society and then community is something to be invented and honed, constantly aspiring to a higher calling and a way of living life with each other. Soulful action helps direct the course of law. It calls into account the fiduciary role of elected officials. The Constitution of the United States and of Maryland are first and foremost in providing guidance to local governments who enjoy their rights and privileges granted to them by the two aforementioned contracts. You are duty-bound to honor your oath of office and your pledge to uphold, uphold both contracts, even to the extent of not allowing passionate, organized, local citizens' collective hypocrisy to distort the plain and simple truth of the matter. There is no ambiguity or loophole in the language related to the Second Amendment sanctuary question. It cannot supersede the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of Maryland, both of which you duly elected council members swore to uphold. I admonish, employ, and encourage you to honor your oath of office and do the right thing. Do not let crowds cause you to eat fruit from the poisonous tree. Now is the time for leadership and not partnership that is not a popularity contest. Please do not overlook the vital things that the people often do. No matter how we, how well-meaning or passionate some of your constituents purport to be on this issue, the pathway is clear. Maryland Constitutional, Article One, Section Nine, Section Nine, Oath or Affirmation of Office. I, State Your Name, do swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and the laws thereof, and that I will do the best to my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, with our partiality or prejudice, execute the office of, insert office title, according to the Constitution and laws of this state. In conclusion, to breach this oath is an act of malfeasance, dishonors your office, and fails the citizens you purport to serve.
All right, next is, my name is Dawn Banta Kerr. I am a resident of Wacomiko County, and I live in the Salisbury city limits. I vote in every election. I come from a family of law enforcement locally and in northern New Jersey where I am originally from. I've been shooting since I was six years old at a very young age. My father instilled in me the values and responsibilities of safety, of safely handling firearms. I've passed those lessons on to my son, and he hopes to pass those same lessons down to his children. I am a single mom, and on Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, at eleven forty P.M., someone attempted to break into my home. It took Salisbury City Police over fourteen minutes to get to my home. By then, the perpetrator was thankfully gone. If I didn't have my own firearms, I would have been so scared because I wouldn't have a way to protect and defend us if the individual had been successful in his attempt to enter my home while I was waiting for the Salisbury police. The only thing I could have done was to pray nothing bad would happen to us. I feel so much safer knowing I have the right to bear arms, and I have the ability to defend and protect my son, myself, and our home. Maryland already has strict gun- Maryland already has strict gun laws, including needing to apply for an HQL permit and going through the process to obtain a handgun. The HQL process can be a barrier financially for those of us on a very limited budget and want to legally obtain a handgun. The stricter the gun laws are, the harder it will be for those of us that legally own and those that want to legally own firearms. After all, criminals will still obtain firearms by illegal means, no matter what laws the government passes. Thank you for reading my letter and taking time out of your busy schedule. Please consider my point of view as a single mom merely trying to protect my rights given to me by the Bill of Rights so I can protect myself and my family if, God forbid, the need should ever arise again.
Next is from Kathy Zeiger. I am 72 years old, and for health reasons, I will not attend the council meeting in person. I am writing to inform you I oppose the Second Amendment sanctuary amendment.
Okay, and then I believe this is the last one from Debbie Leith. Elected Wacomiko County council members. I am a resident, business owner, and ex-employee of Wacomiko County, and I have never seen our elected county council members look so reckless in their actions. You as elected council members are destroying the county and the morale of the county employees by your cuts for the FY21 budget. You have lied on TV and in the Salisbury Independent. The vacancies that you have cut have not been vacant for a year. Some not even 30 days ago, the employee left and you have cut. And others are recurring vacancies. People are retiring and resigning. How can you have your auditor compare submitted FY21 budget to working budget FY20? The year is not even closed, and with the shutdown, COVID-19, how are you getting correct figures? You have cut the 5% increase to the employees to 3%, and the health insurance is going up 16%. Do you as elected council members even care about the employees of Wacomiko County? You are killing the morale of the employees. As it stands, the county is hiring new employees making more or just as much as the employees that have been with the county for 15 to 20 years. That is right. It's hard keeping good employees. I can tell you from one business owner to another business, it's hard to cut, and 5% increase is crazy with minimum wage going up and insurance. Will the salaries be adjusted for the years of service and the minimum wage going up? I can answer that for you, no. So you cutting the 5% increase to the employees is crazy and in the middle of this pandemic of COVID-19. You as elected council members need to realize that you're doing what you're doing before you just start cutting. This FY21 budget was submitted before COVID-19 even hit America, before Trump even starts giving grants and any funding of COVID money to anyone in government. And there are guidelines to that COVID money. Like I said, this FY21 budget was submitted before COVID-19 hit us. In the FY21 budget, there is funding for the Wacomiko County employees can get increases. You as elected county council should not pick and choose because of the disagreements you have with the county executive. You are hurting the entire workforce of Wacomiko County just because you want to destroy Wacomiko County and Executive Bob Culver. As a resident of Wacomiko County, everyone can see that you as elected council are out for Executive Bob Culver. In your cuts, you have basically cut the executive's office budget. But as elected council members, did you cut your department's budget? You as elected council members still get your lunches, dinners, tickets, hotels, and meetings paid for by the county. There has not been any cuts to the council department. You as elected council members get paid a part-time salary, but you get health insurance for the whole family if needed, and you get to be in the county pension. For a part-time employee, basically, that's a damn good deal. No other part-timers get that. Let's see some cuts for your department for once. Let's be real for once. As elected Wacomiko County council members, you need to really think about and realize what you're doing to the workforce of Wacomiko County. Thank you for your time. Very concerned resident, business owner, and ex-county employee. Please read this in public comments. That's it.
All right, is that it?
That's all the public comments.
All right, that's definitely proof that we need to have a policy regarding-
We can discuss that.
Public comments. We can't, we're not doing county business.
Yeah, I know. All right, I need a motion to adjourn from a legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed work session by video conference to protect the attorney-client privilege pursuant to general provisions of Article 3-305B7. I need a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. You gotta speak louder. You choose one. Thank you. Motion passes. Now we're going into closed work session because we don't have any more open work sessions.
Okay, let me just get the recorder started real quick.
Okay.